The Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, February 14th is now called order. Mr. Paulson, will you call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Badami.
Here.
Commissioner Birch.
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Janoff.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Vice Chair Hudes.
Here.
And Chair Kane.
Here. Would everyone stand and join Commissioner Birch in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we begin the public presentation tonight, I'd like to put out a suggestion to the commission that I've discussed with staff. Given the perceived turnout for Item 4, Alberta Way, I think we might wish to reverse the order of the items on the agenda. That is to say, make Item 4, Item 3, and make Item 3, Item 4. Comment?
I think that makes a lot of sense, assuming that everyone here for that item is not going to be delayed in coming, but it appears that a lot of people are here.
You think you're here for Alberta Way?
I'm just guessing.
Any objections? Then we will make that switch. The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process. It's a cornerstone of democracy and essential to the Planning Commission conducting its business on behalf of Town Council and the citizens of the town. There's several ways for members to participate in the deliberations of the Planning Commission. Written comments concerning agenda items submitted to staff prior to a commission meeting are always welcome and helpful. At meetings of the commission, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. During verbal communications, an individual may speak on any topic not on the agenda, and any member of the public may speak during the public hearing of an item that is on the agenda. If you wish to address the commission during verbal communication or during consideration of an agenda item, please complete a speaker card located on the back of the benches where you are seated. Turn the card into a staff member and please print your name clearly. For anyone who intends to speak this evening, I would ask that you come up to the podium, adjust the microphone, and speak directly into it. Please state your name and address for the record. In fairness to all who want to speak, it is requested you limit your comments to three minutes. Subcommittee, in addition to the service on the Planning Commission, members of the commission serve on several town committees. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Then I will move on to the verbal communications portion of our meeting. Members of the public are invited to address the commission on any issue at this time, at any issue not on the agenda. Please remember there's a three-minute time limit. When the yellow light comes on, you still have 30 seconds left. When the red light comes on, your time has expired. Do we have any cards this evening?
We have not received any.
This is for Alberta Way, sir, so that wouldn't come into the public communication portion. I'm going to move on to the consent calendar. Items on consent may be acted upon by a single motion, but before the Planning Commission acts on the consent calendar, any member of the public or of the commission may request that that item be removed. Tonight we have two items on consent: approval of the minutes of the January 24th Planning Commission meeting and 1-6666 Topping Way, ANS application S17011 requesting approval for demolition of an existing single-family residence and construction of a new single-family residence on property zoned R18. This is APN 53209018. A continuance has been requested for this item to go through the March 14th meeting, for which reason it has been placed on consent. Do we have a request to pull an item, or is there a motion to approve? Commissioner Badami.
I move to approve the consent calendar consisting of Item Number 1, the approval of the minutes from January 24th, 2018, and Item Number 2, which is 1-6666 Topping Way, requesting a continuance to March 14th of 2018.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Birch.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Passes unanimously. I'm going to move now to the public hearing items. Number 3 becomes number 4, number 4 becomes number 3, and so this is item, the new 3. Architecture and site application S15056, conditional use permit application U15009, and environmental impact report EIR 16001. Project location is 401-409-Alberta Way. Property owner applicant Shane Arters, LP Acquisitions, requesting approval to demolish three existing office buildings and construct a new two-story office building with underground parking on property zone CH. This is APN 52923018. Ms. Amher, will you provide us with a staff report?
Yes. Oh, we had a...
To the chair, I'll be recusing myself from this item as my residence is located within 500 feet of the project application.
Thank you.
I will return.
Good evening. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. The item in front of you is the continuation from December 13th and January 10th meetings. The review of the proposed office building at 401 to 409 Alberta Way was continued to February 28th with specific direction to consider revisions to the project. The applicant submitted a letter explaining that additional changes to the project are not feasible. The applicant requested that the meeting be re-notice for tonight, February 14th, so that the Planning Commission can consider the project as submitted for consideration on December 13th and January 10th hearings. This concludes the staff's presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff at this point? Good. So, at our previous meeting, the public portion of the public hearing was closed. Unless there's an objection, it seems to me that our job tonight is to direct questions to staff, discuss the application until a motion is provided. Are there any comments on that point of view? Then let's do that. Let's discuss the application. Not all at once, but whenever you're ready. Commissioner O'Donnell.
At our last meeting, there was an attempt to compromise, which the applicant has rejected, therefore I was taken in by, and I mean in the best sense, the proposed, well, the motion we passed last time. That was to both address the complaints and also to help the applicant. But since the applicant doesn't like that help, I guess I go back to my original position. I think the project is too large. I think the impact's not withstanding. You know, it's interesting. I've been doing this for 14 years or 15 years, whatever it's been, and I've never have seen a traffic report that didn't tell me things are going to be fine, and they never are. And then I'm told, well, we all use the same manuals. And I have to tell you, I wouldn't use those manuals because they're consistently wrong. So, in any event, as far as I'm concerned this evening, our task is quite easy. I personally will be voting against the project.
Is that a motion or comment? All right. We can still have discussion after a motion. Anyone else? Commissioner Janoff.
Excuse me. My comments are fairly lengthy, so in deference to other commissioners who may have shorter comments to make, I would propose that they speak...
Why don't you lead us off? Give us a couple, then we'll go somewhere else.
As Commissioner O'Donnell mentioned, this was, the motion for the last meeting was an attempt to provide a compromise, to really give the neighbors at least back the views that they cherish. The applicant chose, as Commissioner O'Donnell has mentioned, to reject our recommendation. They failed to take the opportunity to address the concerns of the neighbors. They failed to directly and positively address the neighbors' issues of mass, scale, loss of views, and traffic overload on Alberta Way. I will not be supporting the applicant's, the application before us tonight. Specifically, I find a lack of conformity to the following general plan elements, and there may be others. I won't read the context of each of these because I think you're all familiar with them, but generally speaking, they speak to the loss of views, the loss of quality of life, the impact on the neighborhood, which would be a negative impact. The specific elements in the general plan are policy LU1.1, LU1.2, LU1.6, LU1.8, LU6.2, LU6.4, LU7.3. In addition, the policies within the community design element of the general plan, the applicant has also shown a lack of conformity to include policy CD1.1, CD1.2, CD1.4. Throughout the general plan, throughout many documents of the town, the preservation of scenic views is so heavily emphasized. It cannot be understated how important that is to the town. Along those lines, again, in the community design element, policy 16.1, which I will say is to prevent development that significantly depletes, damages, or alters landscape vistas, 16.2, 16.3, 17.3. And specifically, the 17.3 are the criteria that town staff is required to address and review from an applicant's report. The item in question is Item N, which is bridge line preservation. There is a considerable amount of the bridge line that will be obstructed by the proposal 3 from the applicant. In addition to the general plan elements, which I find a lack of conformity from the applicant, I also find a lack of conformity to the following elements within the town's commercial design guidelines. And I would just reiterate something that many of the commissioners have already stated many times. From the introduction of the commercial design guidelines, the proposed structure does not conform with the introductory comments which say that the community's built environment characterized by relatively small-scale buildings, a quiet architectural demeanor, respect for neighboring properties, and the attention to architectural detail and landscaping. Furthermore, in Section 1.3 Purpose, the following bullets, I find to be a lack of conformity from the applicant, ensure that the new development reinforces and supports special qualities of the Town of Los Gatos, establishes a high level of design quality, maintains a building scale consistent with the town's small-scale image, reinforces the special quality of the town's visual character, protects property owner investments by discouraging inappropriate adjacent development. I'd like to pause on this note to make a comment. That hasn't been made so far on the design. We're all talking about the 40 or 50 or 60 or 80 feet separation between the proposed plan and the adjacent properties. That's for the building that's above ground. If you look at the plan very closely, if I'm not mistaken, the underground structure is actually within 15 feet of the property line. So, when we talk, the northern property line of the adjacent neighbors. So, when we talk about potential disruption to neighboring properties, keep in mind that the underground excavation that you all are concerned with is literally within 15 feet of your property line. That's about 40 feet closer than the building proper. Just want you to have that in mind. Moving on. In Section 1.4, again, of the commercial design guidelines, community expectations, I find that the applicant is not in conformance with the following bullets: careful attention to architectural and landscape details similar to the town's residential structures, variety and diversity of architectural character that supports the current interesting mix of the town's styles, small-scale buildings with a strong pedestrian orientation, the sensitive interface of commercial development with adjacent residential neighborhoods, strong encouragement of a unique Los Gatos scale and character, maintenance of a sensitive place with views of surrounding hills preserved, rich architectural fabric with interesting details, scale and character appropriate to the setting, thoughtful architectural design, not boxes, with architectural cosmetic mansard roofs attached.
Thank you. Did any of your citations address the infill policy?
I did not address the infill policy. It was on my list, but have at it.
Okay, it's on my list. Anyone else? Commissioner Birch.
So, I'll start my comments out by first stating that I'm really proud of the work that staff, Town Council, and the Planning Commission has done on this. I think it's been very thoroughly reviewed, and I think that everyone has done an astounding job at the review level they've done, as obviously demonstrated by Commissioner Janoff. And also that, I think I, along with everyone else here, is aware that something will be built on that corner. It is a commercial property. That something is going to happen there. However, as a commissioner, I would hope that property that is designed to fit into a sensitive corner like that would be designed with a neighborhood compatibility in mind. We all recognize that property values in Los Gatos are high, and I think that that is because of the sensitive design standards that we have that keep it in the small-town character and keep the things that we cherish, such as the views. If we begin to vary from those sensitive design standards, we may not see that people do want to continue leasing here, that home values stay as high as they are. So, based on those thoughts that I've had, I feel that as it stands, the application is not compatible with the neighborhood. And very specifically, I think the item that has caused me the most angst recently is the views. The view corridors, from many standpoints, I know that Commissioner Janoff was trying to reach a good compromise last time and maintain a portion of the view corridors, but as it stands, there's a number of, you can walk up and down that street, and from various angles or properties, the view corridors are clearly interrupted. Based on those and probably plenty other, but I'm sure we're all going to wind up saying a lot tonight, I wouldn't be able to support the application as it stands.
Further comment? Commissioner Hanson.
I spoke a lot at the last meeting, so I won't say as much this time. I, too, am concerned about the size of this building, but I do struggle with the idea of objective standards. And so, we're in a situation where the objective standards say that the building isn't too large, but then there's this concept of neighborhood compatibility, which we, you know, isn't, doesn't, is suited to pure objective standards. So, we spent a lot of time at the last meeting trying to get to the concept of what constitutes Class A space, and there are clearly buildings out there that are less than 74,000 square foot, feet, that are Class A space, but the applicant has testimony from their, from realtors that what they're trying to make and sell to is, the buyers are wanting more like 37,000 square feet. That kind of led me to a question about, you know, so, when we're looking at these applications and we're trying to, you know, balance this gray area between the neighborhood compatibility, which is clear, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to fit into the small neighborhood, and then the idea of the objective standards, what is the right number? And so, when we started out this process, I remember Commissioner O'Donnell made a motion to reduce the size by a third, and that seemed like a good stake in the ground, but it was short of an objective standard. And then it went to, we ended up denying it on that basis, and the neighborhood compatibility and compliance with general plan. It went to Town Council, and Town Council explicitly said that there was no basis for the Planning Commission choosing a number of a third less because it didn't have any kind of objective standard, and that was in the testimony that was made during the public hearing. So, I get back to the thing about, I would like to find a way that we can make this building smaller, but I struggle with, how do you come up with an objective standard? I clearly hear what the neighbors want, that, you know, at least the, most of the comments we got recently were 64,000, but where's that number come from? I also hear that the number that was the reasonable alternative in the EIR of 74,000 might have been, came up with, by the people that wrote the EIR, and it might have not been an objective standard, but it was in the EIR and it was studied for impacts, which was determined to be no significant impact. And so, then we get back to the thing about traffic, and so, the issue about the size has to pertain to some kind of impact, and it's the view, and it's the traffic, and then the EIR also says that there is no, that there's no significant impact at the 93,000 square foot level, and also not at the 74,000 square foot level. So, then I get back to, how do we come up with the right number that is going to be an objective standard that, that makes sense, that would make the neighbors happy? And I don't know what the answer to that is, but I struggle with that. And, you know, and then back to the traffic thing, I totally understand the concerns about traffic, and I know we've seen, in the case of many EIRs, that what turns out in terms of the overall traffic doesn't make a difference, but we have to all keep in mind that the EIR is only supposed to evaluate the traffic impact from that particular application. So, in the case of this neighborhood or any other, the fact that there's a whole lot of traffic in the neighborhood right now isn't something that we can use to turn down the EIR. It has to be based on the traffic from this particular application. So, then I wondered, and this is going to lead to a question for staff, supposing that there really was a huge variance and the actual traffic that is generated from this application is way higher than it possibly was, are there any other additional mitigations that could be made? Because we wouldn't turn down an application because of traffic. We would ask them to do mitigations to make sure that the traffic wasn't as much of an issue.
Thank you. Commissioner Hudes.
I did want to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then I'm done.
Go forward.
My question is, supposing that the actual amount of traffic that is generated by this application was significantly larger than what was estimated by the traffic consultants and the IT trip generation, is there, the action that would be taken with regard to the EIR is that there would be additional mitigation required? And so, is there any additional mitigation that the applicant can make? I know they've already agreed to make some mitigations that weren't required. Is there anything else that could be done to mitigate traffic relative to this application?
Well, I'd say relative to this application, and Lynn Lampros may be able to weigh in as well, if necessary. What we have is an EIR that evaluated approximately 93,000 square foot building. With the mitigation measures, there's no impacts. We're now down to 74,000, which presumably would be less impacts than the 93 that was studied. There isn't a mechanism for an after-the-fact traffic study to evaluate the traffic that's actually generated. Unfortunately, we don't have the traffic engineer here this evening, but I would say that's not the process that is followed. Once you have a building in the ground and occupied, I'm not aware of the town going back and doing additional studies. There could be some conclusions drawn as future projects come through, where you could potentially look at kind of the baselines from pre and post, but there's no additional mitigations required pursuant to the environmental impact report, even at the higher traffic generation.
Just a follow-up. So, I understand that. As a follow-up to that, I know in a previous hearing, it was said that the current level of service for that intersection is level of service B, and that, and if I heard it right, that additional mitigation might kick in, which would also factor, this would factor in the overall traffic if it got to level of service D, but that would have to be based on the application. Is that correct?
Generally, I think the town's traffic policy requires, or does not allow you to drop below one level of service from what the existing is. And so, you can't drop two levels, otherwise you would have to mitigate it back up to at least not dropping one level, and they currently comply with those requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Hudes.
Yes, thank you. I think I have a little bit maybe different view of our task as compared to some of the other commissioners, although not all. I appreciate Commissioner Janoff's thorough review of the complete project with regard to the Los Gatos general plan and standards. However, the Planning Commission considered this project once before and denied it, and it was appealed to the council who reviewed it. The council, while not approving it, remanded it back to the Planning Commission for consideration because of new information that was provided to them, that we didn't have the benefit of reviewing. And in remanding it to us, they did not have specific numbers for us to review, but they had 10 areas of modifications that they discussed in returning it to us. And what that meant to me is that they had reviewed parts of the project, and parts of the project were acceptable to some of the council members and parts weren't to others, but that they wanted us to look at some specific areas. And, you know, I don't view the role of the Planning Commission as an appeals court for the Town Council. I don't think it works that way. And so, I think our role is to look at land use and issues with the ability that we have to go deeply into particular areas and to provide recommendations and to approve aspects of certain projects. So, I don't think it's within the purview of the Planning Commission to ignore what the council did or said. And so, while I appreciate all of the items that were noted, my concerns are a bit narrower, and they are... and they're really focused on three areas that were possible modifications discussed by the council. There were 10 of them that I could count, and they appear in the staff report of December 8th, page 3. And the ones that I am concerned about are the, number one, the reduced square footage, and whether the square footage reduction to 74,000 was information which we had not previously reviewed, and whether that would accomplish compliance with standards and guidelines. And with regard to that, that brought in some other issues, obviously, but I think that that's an area that's legitimate for us to look at and debate. The other area that I think is their discussion about increased public space and landscaping on the site. And in particular, this is an issue that I raised with the developer about a dedicated dog park area and whether that was the use that the neighbors desired. And in looking at the council direction, I could not see specific direction as a dog park, as was indicated in the letter from the developer. So, my proposal earlier was for the developer to meet with the neighbors and to discuss potential uses of that space that might be more appropriate or more desired by the, both the developer and the neighbors. I didn't see any attempt to do that, so that issue to me is still open. And the third one is one that, for me, could get a little bit technical, but I do want to get into the discussion when the commission thinks it's the appropriate time, and that is the information on the role of Caltrans in the process with regard to EIR and other traffic and safety impacts that are created along that corridor. So, I don't want to drag us into that discussion at this point, but it is a discussion that I would like to have at some point. So, those are the three areas. The other seven areas that were in the direction, I don't think are open for discussion because I believe that the applicant provided a clear direction that was consistent with the desires of the council, and those were not areas that I feel are in the purview of the commission to reopen because the response was consistent with the direction from the council. So, those are sort of my comments.
Thank you. A few words from the chair, unless, you have something, Commissioner?
Just a question. I had originally thought this was a de novo hearing, as we've talked about. So, to say that we are being governed by what the council did when they couldn't reach a decision, and therefore it's a de novo hearing, confuses me. How does one get direction from a council that couldn't make a decision and simply send it back to us and said it would be a de novo hearing? Could I have some guidance from staff on that?
I think I can take that one. It's a de novo hearing in that you get to evaluate the project anew. You can be guided by the town council's dictates, conversation, the transcript of that meeting, but you do not have to, you can take into consideration, but you don't have to be guided by it. So...
Thank you.
You're on your own.
Yes, Commissioner.
Just a quick remark on that topic is that, and the reason why I think it's important to think about that is that I don't think it's fair to either the developer or the residents of the town to let something go on forever. And so, I think it's important, where they didn't make a decision, nevertheless, to listen, to read the record and to listen to the discussion and guidance that they've provided, so that everything doesn't just, you know, completely open up as a blank slate when we've already gotten direction from a body that has, in some ways, more authority than we do.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
My understanding is if we were to deny and to recommend denial, it isn't like it ends there. It goes back to the council, and certainly they must know what Commissioner Hootis thinks they had in mind. I don't know what they had in mind. They could not pass a motion. They could not get three votes on anything besides sending it back to us without guidance. So, I agree with him. This should not go on forever. If we turn it down here, I recommend turning it, the council doesn't have to have it go on forever, or they can either turn it down or approve it with modifications, or just approve it. So, it will not go on forever, but I just want to respond to that one point. Thank you.
And from a cynical standpoint, Commissioner, there's certainly a way to prevent it from going on forever, and that would be to find a way to compromise. I went back to the old minutes and the old films, and with all due respect, Commissioner Hanson, I'm just going to play with you for a second. It was Commissioner Erickson who said one-third. It was in his motion. I was sitting next to him. Tom gets a lot of credit for everything. I can't allow him to have that. And in respect for his service, I'm going to give him that plug. He said, "Please consider one-third," and it was in the motion. I also went back and listened to the town council on how they struggled to get to something they could agree with. And with respect to my colleague, Commissioner Hootis, they gave us a clean slate. They had opinions, they said this, they said that, but the maker of the motion said, "I'm sending this back without direction," and it was seconded, and it passed. Now, one can consider the comments made by council and consider them very carefully, but that's not what was in the motion. And the attorney advised when we first talked about this, two meetings ago, one meeting ago, this was indeed de novo, so we're taking it from scratch. I wanted to add some considerations. I'm the chair, I might have a prerogative to do this, but to everyone listening, we have a long list of concerns from Commissioner Janoff, and I don't know if this was one of them or not, but from the general plan, which is very much a bible for us, and then the subsequent hillside guidelines, commercial guidelines, residential guidelines, but this is where it all comes from. And it's right up in front, goals and policies. Policy LU11, and I don't know if that was one of yours, Commissioner, but it says, "Encourage developers to engage in discussions as early as possible regarding the nature and scope of the project and possible impacts and mitigation requirements." And I read that, and I thought, maybe, I wasn't there, but maybe somebody wasn't listening when the 92,000 came up. There's nothing like that, and it doesn't sound like they got into discussions early enough to present, prevent a disaster. It's been a very long time, and time is money, and that, I don't like it to go on forever either. But the way it doesn't go on forever either is to try and meet us halfway or more than halfway. 92,000 is, at the kindest way I can refer to it, is a lack of awareness of the town requirements, the codes, and how we try to do business and how we try to protect our neighborhoods. Infill projects shall be designed in context with the neighborhood and surrounding zoning with respect to existing scale and character. It goes on and on and on in so many places. Small scale, small town. And early on, maybe a clearer message could get about the roadblocks ahead. I don't know. We have passionate language in our general plan, in our commercial guidelines, in the town code about protect, and I see our job, we all see our job differently, but if I put it in a nutshell, it would be to protect and preserve and develop, consistent with the guidelines that town council has given us to adjudicate these matters. And this particular project doesn't seem to ring that bell. I'm not a real estate person, that's a liability, could also be an asset. I don't see the magic in Class A, per se. You get a higher price for it, and it's a nicer building, but if you can't get a Class A in there, then maybe a Class B. But I would also add that maybe you can get a Class A in there. Now, the 74,000 seems to be arbitrarily pulled out of the EIR, where it was arbitrarily inserted, but we've been given evidence from some of the letter writers, and we've got four, 400 letters, and some of them are repeats, but I hope you've had time to read them. That's part of the passion behind the project that supports the passion behind the words. A whole lot of people think they're going to be adversely impacted, and they've come down and come down. They've given me a note, and it's a real estate, what is it, Cushman in Wakefield, and it shows that in Los Gatos, there's a Class A office building at 62,000 square feet, and in Los Gatos, there's a Class A office building at 6,900 square feet. And part of what I'm doing is adding some thoughts to the record, and another thought I want to add is that the applicant gave us, I asked, "What's a Class A?" because I don't know. And they sent me a letter explaining what a Class A was, and one of the experts, I'd forget the name, it was 42 Second Street, said that Class As can be, what, 200,000 in an urban setting and can be 50,000 in a suburban setting. And that was the letter I got from the applicant. I found that persuasive. The very sensitive point to the project, what I hear over and over again is economic feasibility. We can't do this or that, or we give up economic feasibility. I've gone through the general plan, the town code, commercial guidelines, over, I cannot find economic feasibility, that it's simply not my department. My department is, as stated, to preserve, protect, and develop consistent with our guidelines. And there's a lot of strong persuasive language about economic feasibility, but I just don't think that's what's before me. So, that may be a good place to end it. Comments, questions? Commissioner Hootis?
Maybe I could follow up with staff. The topic of feasibility, how does feasibility come into the way we are to review an application? Feasibility, economic feasibility.
So, typically, the planning commission has not taken that into consideration. That does not preclude you from taking that into consideration, and typically, the economic feasibility is an issue that comes up through lawsuits and moving forward through lawsuits and showing probably more information on that economic feasibility than you may have before you this evening. And so, you are free to choose to take that into consideration, but you are not required to take that into consideration.
So, if I may follow up, and maybe with regard, maybe with the attorney, I was reading about the level of evidence that a lead agency must take pursuant to 15091A, and one of the, one of the considerations is considerations which make infeasible the alternatives identified in the final EIR. I did some, a little further research on this topic, and it seems as though the, what we need to look at is whether something is truly infeasible, not just desirable or a good thing. And I went back and reviewed some of the testimony from the applicant, and in hearing the language, in using their description about the type of project, they used language like, "It would be nice," or "It would be attractive to the market," but I did not see any specific evidence, financial evidence, that would say that it would not be feasible. And so, that is where, you know, I am in terms of evaluating this topic of economic feasibility, that yes, number one, it is an issue that can be evaluated, but two, that there was not sufficient evidence presented to us that the project was infeasible as defined in what I read.
Other comments? Commissioner Janoff?
Just to follow up on Commissioner Hootis's point, I don't personally feel we have enough information on the economic feasibility to make a determination. That said, the applicant did provide us with the rationale behind the reduction from the 83,000 square feet to the 74,000 square feet, indicating that the commensurate reduction in the cost of construction made that reduction economically feasible. Now, that's not, that's not an infinite, I mean, that's not a, you know, that slope changes as you, as your building size decreases, but with regard to feasibility of a smaller-sized building, I have not seen evidence presented that it would be infeasible to build a building that is at the one-third mark that was recommended in the prior planning commission motion, or in the, of all of the letters that we received from the applicants or from the residents, the one number, the two numbers that stick in my mind are the 52,000 to 62,000 square foot numbers. So, with regard to feasibility, I'd be willing to support the project if I saw the feasibility numbers that would indicate that a smaller building can be built.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Couple of points. I think the standards used for an EIR are different than the standards used in approving this project or not approving this project. When you do an EIR, you can have an EIR approved and deny the project. So, the standards are different, and one of the things is you have to consider the alternatives, and a no project alternative, for example, is often trotted out and doesn't get much anywhere. And then, secondly, as you go down, you look at it like this one did. Now, the number they used for the lower number was truly plucked out of the air, and it was not, people have been giving that some significance that I don't think the writers of the EIR would have attributed to it, and I don't think they did. The day we have to decide whether something is economically feasible, we're in the wrong business, because that is, in my judgment, not a role. They come in, and they could have come in and said, "I want to build 150,000 square foot building, because that's really going to make a lot of money." And we're not going to make much money at 89,000 square feet, for example. Are we supposed to judge that? And if we are, what is our standard? What does it mean to be economically feasible? Does it mean you make a lot of money? You make a little money? You lose money? We don't do that. We decide whether the project complies with the laws here, the regulations here, and that's what we do, and that's what we're supposed to be able to do. We're not economists. In any event, even if we were, and somebody sitting here, maybe, I'm not, that would not be our role. Now, let me say this. I'm prepared to make a motion as soon as people are finished saying what they want to say, because in a way, I've gotten the flavor, and maybe there's more we want to get, so I don't want to rush it, but I would, I'm prepared to make a motion when my fellow commissioners have gotten whatever they want to say out.
And I'm prepared to receive that motion unless there's other comments. Commissioner Janoff?
I'm prepared to hear the motion. However, I may have discussion regarding amendments to CUPs that would be pertinent to add to whatever goes to the town council.
I would invite Commissioner Janoff to make the motion, because it sounds like you would be better prepared to do that, and you had a wonderful listing and discussion of what you have in mind. So, if you would like to make the motion, I would encourage that.
I can make the motion, but before I do that, I'd like to discuss the amendments to the CUP that I would like to have the commission consider. So, there are, there were a couple of areas that were of particular issue to the commission as well as the neighbors. One of them had to do with the potential damage to neighboring properties, and I think we were all very interested in the geological and seismic analysis that the various engineers and experts provided. Along the line of the testimony, someone had mentioned that the, one of the ways to ensure that there isn't damage to surrounding properties or neighboring properties is to apply the appropriate test measurement devices to ensure that the construction work doesn't damage the neighboring properties to that end. I would propose an amendment to CUP 76, or where appropriate, that says, "The developer is to monitor the physical effects of construction on the foundation..." the developer is to monitor the physical effects of construction on the foundation of adjacent residential structures. Specifically, measurements are to be made in accordance with best testing practices to apply strain gauges or appropriate data gathering devices to measure movement, stress, and strain on the neighboring residential structures. Measurement data shall be delivered to town staff on a weekly basis and should be made of, shall be made available in a format that allows for public access and review.
Can I, may I ask a question on it? If the motion, for example, my motion, was going to be to deny or to recommend, depending on what we're talking about, the project, in which case, we wouldn't get into the conditions of the project we're not approving. So unless you have a desire to approve the project, perhaps we can avoid dealing with things that are not applicable to denial.
The, the purpose of my comments are to make sure that wherever the motion goes, whether approval or denial, the next body that hears the issue has the opportunity to at least hear the comments that we would make if, if there's consensus to support the modifications to the CUP as mentioned. So it's, it's really a comment to go forward more than an amendment to the motion.
And I think, Commissioner Genov, you've accomplished that, simply by putting it into the record.
And I have one other.
Accomplish that one.
And I won't apologize, I think this is an important issue. I just wanted to make sure that we got all of this in. And so I have a preamble that's a little bit lengthy, so bear with me. Traffic in Los Gatos is an acknowledged problem. Traffic-related disputes are a common public concern heard by the planning commission, as well as the town council, when new developments are proposed. There's an ongoing dispute between some of the town public and applicant developers, as represented in the environmental impact analysis or traffic impact analyses, that the accepted methods for analyzing traffic impact, such as the ITE methodology, are outdated and/or do not adequately reflect the unique traffic situations of Los Gatos. Public, the public often provides traffic counts and anecdotal evidence that seem to contradict the formal analyses. With that in mind, I'd like to suggest for discussion that with this development and all future commercial and perhaps multifamily developments where traffic impact is a public concern, we include traffic counting devices as an element of the CUP. Such devices, similar to the program in place at Hillbrook School, would provide data to the town on a weekly basis. Aggregate project data may be then compared to estimate project data and to use and to determine whether the present methodology used to analyze traffic impact is adequate, or whether modified or factored methodology is warranted for the town of Los Gatos development projects. In other words, if we count cars and their count winds up being exactly the same as what the traffic impact analysis said it would be, then we continue to use the methodology that's been traditionally used. However, if the traffic impact is greater than, to a substantial number than what was estimated in the ITE or the traffic impact analysis, the town can use that differential to modify the results or to consider when modifying, or consider modifying results or using a different methodology when we consider traffic impact analysis on any future development. We've gone around and around and around on, this, this is, this is a theory and this is an idea, but if we have data, we should be able to gather the data and use the data to make better decisions in the future. So the proposed language that I would propose is, and then an addendum to CUP 104, or where appropriate, and again, I would recommend that this be considered as, as a CUP element for all developments going forward. The development shall implement vehicle counting devices with fail-safe backup to obtain daily incoming and outgoing traffic counts during office working hours, nominally in this case between the hours of 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM. Count data shall be delivered to the town staff on a weekly basis and shall be made available in a format that allows for public access and review. That concludes my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well stated. Commissioner Hanson?
I just had a question regarding one of Commissioner Genov's comments, the first one, regarding the geology. I thought that we had already incorporated in the CUP that there would be monitoring of the, of the neighboring properties for foundation issues during the construction phase, and that it was going to happen weekly. So I don't, I don't recall exactly what the terms were, but I was pretty sure that we had that already.
I believe we did, and, yeah. Mike Weiss from Public Works is available to answer.
Mike Weiss, Associate Engineer. Condition approval 81, settlement monitoring and mitigation plan specs out some specifications and details as to how that could be monitored and mitigated during the course of construction if this application will ultimately be approved.
So, so if I heard you correctly, yes, there is a condition for settlement monitoring, but the details are not worked out? Is that what you said?
There is a condition, correct. There are some listed items and details for how that would be measured, ultimately to be approved and reviewed and approved by the town engineer.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell, would you care to make a motion?
I would, but first, I'm going to ask staff, because we have before us the architecture site application, the conditional use permit, and the environmental impact report. And I assume that if one were to deny, or, of the first two, you'll have to help me in my recollection, I had understood that on a use permit, the town council had the final say on use permits. Is that correct?
That's incorrect in this case. In this case, the planning commission is the deciding body for both, for all three applications. Any decision by planning commission could be appealed.
Okay, then, the next question I have, and I think it's the only other question, if you move to deny the architecture site application and the conditional use permit, do you, is it ripe to also consider the environmental impact report?
You may consider all three, but if there is a motion to deny the architecture and site and conditional use permit application, then no decision is required for the environmental review.
We've crossed that bridge before, about six months ago, you had the same questions, and they're good questions.
Well, my age, the memory isn't so good. All right. I'm going to make a motion that we deny the architecture and site application S15-056 and the conditional use permit U15009, on the basis of the, the comments that we have made tonight, with particular reference to Commissioner Genov's enumeration and the other comments we've made, but Commissioner Genov actually listed many, I think the chair listed some too. But that's the basis, which I will not repeat, that is in the record. And that would be, I think, the complete motion, I would not make a motion on the environmental impact report.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Birch?
I will second that.
Discussion? Commissioner Hudes?
For, for the maker of the motion, are you including every point that Commissioner Genov made as a basis for denial?
No. I, I think at this point, one can deny this for a number of reasons. Basically, I don't think I have to single, I don't think I have to single out each of them, but I would agree with you that I have not weighed each of the points that Commissioner Genov so carefully and diligently raised. But sufficient to say that a number of those, I, I do support. If you feel it necessary to separate out some of those, I would certainly listen to that suggestion.
Well, I've already stated three that I felt were ones that were, we were directed to look at by council, meaning the square footage reduction, the use, landscaping and use of that land, and Caltrans and traffic issues, of which I have specific concerns that were not resolved.
Since I don't believe the council directed us to do anything, it's de novo, I would not accept that comment. So I, I'm just going to make the motion, let the motion stand as it is with the second, and if anybody has any specific things they want to include in it, I would certainly consider that.
Well, I will ask for discussion.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion?
So I have a question of staff, if I may.
Yes.
With regard to the EIR, I have some concerns with the EIR. Those, the concerns with the EIR were not listed as grounds for denial. Since the, if the motion passes and the EIR is, is not referenced, is it possible for me to include my comments on my concerns with the EIR as part of the record?
You can add your comments to the public record if you wish, prior to a vote.
Okay.
Question for staff. If, if in this instance, Commissioner Hudes was to summarize bullet, you know, could he, could he follow up with more detail subsequently? Can he submit those in writing, in other words?
I would not recommend that, however, we would not prohibit that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
With all due respect to Commissioner O'Donnell's motion, I, and I, and I appreciate all the work that Commissioner Janoff did to come up with all of the parts of the general plan. I'm, at, at this moment in time, although I, I heard everything that you said, I didn't, it didn't kind of complete, I did, I don't, haven't had a chance to really look at all of those things that you mentioned as reasons for denial. So at this moment in time, I'm uncomfortable with supporting a motion to deny based on a list of things that I haven't been able to review and, and incorporate with the, with regard to the project. So, I mean, and other than that, I'd heard that it's too big, and that, and I'm also uncomfortable with that without, you know, being specific about how, you know, what, what that is from an objective perspective. So, so I guess, I don't know what the right way to resolve that is, maybe, you know...
The vote no, that would do it.
Commissioner Genov?
I'd just like to comment, I, I believe that the, the list of non-conforming items that I presented is not specifically attached to the motion. However, I did want to comment, the overriding theme in the list that I've presented is that the project doesn't meet the scale and character of the town of Los Gatos, specifically as mentioned in these comments, or in the, in the general plan elements, and that the scenic views are obliterated, largely obliterated with a new, with a new building. So the overriding theme that runs through most of these, and I appreciate that not everyone has had a chance to review them in detail, and may not agree with, with what I've listed, but that was my perspective, just, just to give you that background.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Let me say what I had in mind, because it may not be complete enough, and we could do that. In making my motion, I was actually thinking very simply, I think the project is too large, and because of its size, it takes away from the view, it is not consistent with the neighborhood, it doesn't use good architectural planning, I think the two stories, particularly their lateral scope is too great. That pretty much sums it up. I think the traffic report, as I said before, I don't have a lot of confidence, and I don't blame the people that did the traffic report, they all rely on the same things, which I, in my experience, in the years that I've done this, is consistently wrong. And the proof of that pudding is to watch the traffic after the buildings are built. And I have done that for years. People parachute in here and give us their opinions from a book that is good throughout the country, and I personally don't accept that. So all those reasons that I've said, well, I don't have to go over each and every point that Commissioner Janoff wisely mentioned, but those that I just said, which are fairly discreet and not lengthy, are the basis for my motion.
Further discussion or a vote? Commissioner Hudes?
So with the comments that Commissioner O'Donnell made, I'm more comfortable with the motion, as I am opposed to the project, but I am, I'm glad we're not including every item that Commissioner Janoff proposed as the complete grounds, although I'm glad that that information is being entered into the record and will be part of the testimony that would be considered, should it be, should this item be further considered. So I, I will be supporting the motion to deny, given that broader basis. I, I would like, at this point, to speak about some concerns I have with the EIR and with the, the way the EIR is being completed with regard to traffic.
Proceed.
So my concern is that, that we have a gridlock situation that's directly linked to cut-through traffic, and that situation is not being analyzed by our traffic impact analyses that I've seen. And this is a highly predictable condition that, that occurs and recurs on certain days of the week, Fridays and weekends, and it not only puts gridlock onto some of our arteries, it also prevents access to side streets and driveways, and that's where my concerns come in about this project. The town has adopted a temporary study fix for this solution, but does not have a, a permanent fix or resolution for this issue, and it needs to be approved by Caltrans, I think, who has this. And the way it's important, and the reason I want to go on the record on this, is that the general plan says, in Traffic 3.7, that all traffic reports shall include analyses of nearby uses with unusual or unique traffic generation factors or peak hours, and I think that this is an example of that. I also think that Caltrans' guidelines on preparation of traffic impact studies states that seasonal and weekend variations in traffic should also be considered where appropriate. And I don't see that in the traffic report that we have. There is substantial public testimony to this condition, yet the condition was not mentioned in the NOP, the DEIR, the TIA, or the EIR. And from what I could tell, traffic measurements were only taken on two dates, January 21st, 2015, and May 13th, 2015. And I also want to enter into the record that while we rely on expert testimony and reports, we are not restricted to this, according to the California Court of Appeals, that said that relevant personal observations of area residents on non-technical subjects may qualify as substantial evidence. And in the case that was cited, specifically, they talked about residents' observations of traffic conditions. And so the way this impacts this project is in two ways. One is the TIA may be flawed, although I'm not really technically qualified to break that down, but I think it's based on ignoring information that is available. And number two, I think there's evidence that an unsafe condition can be created with hundreds of senior citizens living on a street that may become inaccessible when gridlock is occurring at the entrance to Alberta Way. And in order to mitigate this issue, I believe that it's necessary to widen Alberta Way to accommodate emergency vehicle access. And the current proposal to widen it, which took a lot of digging to find out how much that actually was, is, is three feet, and that seems to be inadequate to accommodate emergency vehicle access, which is generally required to be 14 feet, especially since trees will be planted along the edge of, on the strip just adjacent to the roadway. So it's not even possible for emergency vehicles to just kind of push through some of that as well. So, and our general plan policy says that new development shall be accessible to emergency vehicles and shall not impede the ability of service providers to provide adequate emergency response, that's SAF 7.4. So for those reasons, I have concerns about the EIR itself, and... So, for those reasons, I have concerns about the EIR itself and I think it has implications in future applications that we may be seeing as well.
Outstanding, outstanding contributions by all. Let's vote. All those in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous, six to zero. Mr. Paulson, are there, are there appeal rights?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission can appeal that decision to the Town Council. The appeal must be filed within 10 days. There's a fee for filing the appeal and the appeal forms are available in the Clerk's office.
We're going to take a 10-minute break. I expect the House may clear and we'll be right back.
Applicant is the town of Las Gadas. Consider amendments to Chapter 29 zoning regulations of the Town Code, also the General Code, and also other policy documents regarding plan development ordinances and the conditional use permit table. As I read the application, the town is the applicant. Ms. Armour will present the staff report, after which we may ask questions of the applicant, and we will invite comments from the speakers in public. If you have not turned in the speaker card and intend to speak, please pick one from the back of your chair. Ms. Armour.
Good evening. The item in front of you is consideration of a new plan development ordinance proposed by the Plan Development Study Committee, developed over the last few years, and forwarded to you from Town Council for your recommendation. The recommendation from the Plan Development Study Committee is presented in three parts. First is a draft plan development ordinance. The second is a draft of changes to the table of conditional uses. This is primarily focused on residential uses in commercial zones and a requirement that they be part of mixed-use projects. And the third is edits, minor edits, to the general plan for consistency with the two previous items. In addition to these three items, a list of other important issues was also developed by the Plan Development Study Committee with the recommendation that these eight topics be considered. Staff has provided additional background information for each of these and articulated for each one, or in some cases, two, questions to be considered. This concludes the staff's presentation, but we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Birch.
Ms. Armour, can you explain, maybe for some clarity for myself, about the comment you made about the PDs for residential being part of a mixed-use? I felt like, in a couple places I read it, I almost felt like it contradicted itself, so I wasn't that clear.
So, there were two tasks that were presented to the Plan Development Study Committee. One was to look at modifications or a new plan development ordinance. The other was to look at possible modifications to the conditional use permit table, the conditional uses, to allow residential in commercial zones, but only as part of a mixed-use project. So, that's independent of plan developments. That would be done, conducted through the conditional use permit process. But these were the two main subjects that were considered by this study committee.
And just for additional information, currently, through a conditional use permit, you can request an all-residential project on a commercial site. And so, in the general vicinity of that timeframe, there was a project that was being considered, that the Planning Commission considered, and the council as well. And so, as they developed this study committee, that was another task that they were asked to look at. And ultimately, the recommendation was to still allow residential in those zones, potentially with a CUP, but to require that they also have commercial attached to them or in the same project, so that they meet more of the intent of the general plan designation.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Genof, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hanson.
I, for the rest of the commissioners, I believe Commissioner Hudes as well, I sat on the Plan Development Study Committee. So, my question kind of pertained to, since it's been almost two years since we looked at this, I, everything else was familiar except for item eight, the, that we are supposed to discuss, the addition of general plan land use and/or zoning designations. And it said we had recommended that we consider adding one or more general plan land use or zoning designations, but I could not recall what they were. You know, what we, or did we leave it that, that we didn't think there was enough zoning designations generally, and that we ought to think, make sure that we have the right ones? So, what was the intent of that?
My, my understanding is that the list of eight items, which are included as Exhibit Seven, were topics that were discussed by the committee and that came up as important topics, but beyond the scope of that committee. And so, if you do, if you look at the last item there listed, it's, "Consider adding one or more general plan land use and/or zoning designations."
And I would also offer that you'll probably hear this evening, from one of the other study committee members, Ms. Cantona will speak this evening, and that I believe it was her that brought up the possibility of considering a mixed-use general plan or zoning designation.
Okay, yeah, I was thinking it might have been that. Okay, and then, just one other quick question. Since we're embarking on the process of the, of the general plan 2030 this year, and I looked, I watched the council hearing when they talked about the scope, and it sounded like they had definitely been in favor of doing a public input process. It, I don't know what the other commissioners will think, but there's at least a couple items here where it might be beneficial to get some public input. And my question is, would that be an appropriate venue to, to do that? Because there's a land use element in the general plan. If it turns out that, you know, is that reasonable to think that we'll have opportunity to do public input when we do the general plan process?
The general plan process will definitely involve significant public outreach and public input, and it's likely to cover all topics. There will likely be some focus on topics of particular interest and importance from Town Council, but my understanding is that we will receive comments and suggestions from the public for that, as part of that process in a regular part.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Hudes.
So, I very much appreciate the opportunity to have served on the study committee. It was a great learning experience. It ran over a couple of, well, ran over two calendar year boundaries, I think. My question is, how does the staff report here today and the proposed amendments reflect the recommendations of the PDSC? Are they being taken as the starting point for this? Or were there recommendations or amendments by the council that reviewed the work of the PDSC subsequently?
Council's recommendation or direction to staff was to forward the recommendation from the study committee to the Planning Commission for consideration.
And are there, it looked to me like there were some places where staff was making, well, a number three. It says, "The draft PD ordinance removes the 40,000-square-foot minimum lot size. However, the PDSC recommended the commission consider requiring a minimum lot size for PDs." So, that recommendation to remove the minimum lot size, did that come from the council? Or where did that, that didn't come from the PDSC, obviously?
Well, it did, actually. The removal of the minimum lot size was incorporated into the draft ordinance presented to you this evening. However, in addition to the language of the draft ordinance that was forwarded by the study committee, there was also this list of eight items for consideration. And so, in addition to the agreed-upon ordinance language, there also were these items that should be considered, one of which is considering a minimum lot size threshold for planned developments. It's the third bullet point on that list.
Okay, so while it was a recommendation, there seemed to be enough votes on that committee to say that should be considered and, and re-looked at by whoever looks at it next.
So, these eight items were specifically referenced by the Plan Development Study Committee at the end of their deliberations. And so, I think some of these, and you referenced one, that's a perfect example, Plan Development Study Committee recommended removing it. So, in the ordinance you see from their recommendation, it's not included. However, as we continued and had more meetings and discussion came up, some of these topics kind of got regurgitated, and there was some different ideas. And so, that was one of the topics that the Plan Development Study Committee said, "Well, you know, Planning Commission and Council really should weigh in on this." And so, they can either agree with us, or, you know, they could decide to go a different direction.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Badami.
So, my question follows up on Commissioner Hudes's question, and I noted that the Plan Development Committee had 12 members. So, Exhibit Nine mentions a consensus vote on the revised ordinance. So, was there a motion with a vote, so that maybe we know it was unanimous in forwarding it as proposed? Or was it maybe a seven-five vote, so we can kind of gauge how the committee was leaning? I couldn't find it in any of the minutes.
It was a consensus vote.
So, a consensus vote means unanimous, or?
It does not, and so, we'll have to look. We don't have those exact numbers, and we'll see if those are available. I'll dig through my other binder.
Thank you.
Unless Matthew or Melanie remember off the top of their head.
Commissioner Hanson.
Well, Commissioner Hudes also want to weigh in, because like I said, it's been almost two years. But my recollection is, we spent a lot of time discussing every single issue across many meetings. When it kind of, when it came down to drafting the ordinance, we actually went through every piece, part of the ordinance, and every bit of the language, and we talked through whether people were in agreement with it or not. And I don't recall anyone saying, "I, I can't live with that, and I won't move forward." So, my sense is the consensus was unanimous.
Thank you. Commissioner Badami.
This is very minor. It's nitpicky, but it's a housekeeping issue. So, if this goes forward, Exhibit Five, Section 29.80.080, Section A, I believe we should insert the word "and" between standards, guidelines. Thank you.
Other questions or directions for staff? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go to the public portion of the public hearing. And we have one speaker card. Ms. Cantona.
I too was on that committee. I have lots of comments, but I'm not going to be able to make them all, so I'd just like to make some general comments. And my general comment is, this took place over a very long period of time. It started in 2013 with the town's policy committee looking at it, and then it went on and on. And when the committee was appointed, there was a gap of six months before we actually met, and then there was additional time that we met, and then there was a big gap again before it came back to you, to the council, and then finally to you, and now back to the council. My point in saying that is that I think that, in that period of time, there have been some changes that have happened in the legislative domain that may affect what the conclusions were in this report. In addition, we're going into the general plan cycle pretty soon, and as I think one of you indicated, some of these issues are really general plan issues, such as, you know, new general plan designations, or re-looking at all of the new, the general plan designations to see if they still work, that they don't overlap, that kind of thing. But in particular, what, what was emphasized, I'm going to run out of time, and I think I'm going to ask you to let me speak longer, because I think I have some important things to say. And you talked about it earlier today, objective standards versus subjective standards. That's something that the Town Council wants to look at very carefully during the general plan, because that's the way the legislature is moving, that if we don't have specific objective standards, you won't be able to turn something down or approve something. And I'm saying that because, in your packet, the executive summary, at the end of the executive summary, the vice chair added some discussion about the public, public benefit. And that whole section really bothers me, because you read the zoning, proposed zoning draft, and it's pretty specific, and then it goes to, and it has to be consistent with the general plan, and it has to be this, and it has to be that, and it has to be this, except as stated in Section blah, 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 blah. And then, when you get to Section blah, 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 you have terms that really are not defined and are very subjective. And as the vice chair said, it seems like the total effect has been just moving the deck chairs around. We are substituting one set of language that is not very specific for another set.
Ms. Cantona, your time is up, however. Given your, the depth of experience you have in this area, I'll give you another minute or two, but try to sum up.
Well, I'd like you to ask me questions. I think that would be, be better. But I will point out that on the table of conditional uses, we did add that condition that the residential uses could, could be allowed through CUP in the commercial zones, but it had to be in conjunction with a use that was authorized by that zone, so that we weren't de facto doing a general plan amendment without doing a general plan amendment, and, and, you know, not preserving the integrity of the zone. I would add on that one in particular, though. I question whether one single-family unit should be allowed as one of those conditional uses, since we are looking to increase our housing supply and using single-family and commercial districts unless they provide a large part of the mixed-use, doesn't seem logical to me.
Thank you, Ms. Cantona. I'm sure there'll be questions for you. But again, given, given the amount of time and expertise you have in this area, I believe this item is going to be continued. And if time permits, you might want to put some list of bullet items together for us. And also, as Commissioner O'Donnell has mentioned in the past, you give us some very substantial, meaty, heavy, weighty stuff, and I got your 19 pages at 2:00 today.
What 19 pages?
You submitted guidelines from Menlo Park.
Oh, I, no, what I submitted is the brief from Green Belt Alliance on just this question, and I submitted it on Monday morning, so that it would get to you by Tuesday, but apparently it didn't.
All right, questions for the speaker? Commissioner Hanson.
So, I, I had the same thought as you, in the sense of the general plan starting. But, so, here, here was where I came out. I, I too was thinking about the new laws that came out that are encouraging housing production, and I, I think they have impacts on a number of these definitions, you know, including the minimum-maximum density, and so on and so forth. But going back to the original purpose of the, so I wondered if, if your recommendation was to spend more time studying it before we approve it, or, or is it worth trying to put it out there, because it's better than what we have now? Because the whole reason for this was that people were, developers were willy-nilly, especially in the case of residential, just saying, "I want a PD so that I can, you know, go way above the FAR," and so on and so forth. And so, what, you know, what I, what the Plan Development Study Committee did is make that a lot more specific and, and with a lot more requirements. So, I wondered even with the, the other changes out there, if, you know, it wasn't much better than we have before. So, I'm asking your opinion about.
Okay, I, I think that in some ways it's better, but I also think that by not, under Section 29.80.080, it lists what the plan development overlay is not intended for, and it's not intended for uses inconsistent with the general plan or proposed development that can reasonably be done under existing Town Code or a relaxation of the standards. And then it goes on, there's a bunch that have to do with physical features. And then it goes down to number eight, which says, and seven is for affordable housing. Number eight, "A property being considered for use or combination of use is not allowed in..." It's easier to hold it. Not under one of the existing zoning districts. Well, that, that makes sense. But then it says, "A property being considered for the creative use of the site, consistent with the base zoning district." Well, that's very subjective, you know? It's no, in my opinion, that's no better than the language that we have now, which really allows you to do anything you want from 180 degrees to zero. And also, the, the lack of definition of what is a public, public benefit. And that's why I sent in that thing from the Green Belt Alliance, because they talk about that. And, and at the discussion at the committee, there was discussion about, well, what is the difference between a public benefit and a community benefit? Because the town had just eliminated community benefits, and I honestly could not distinguish the difference between the two. And in the Green Belt Alliance paper, they, they more or less state that, that it's the idea of getting a benefit from a PD that you wouldn't necessarily otherwise get, but whether it's called a community benefit, or a public benefit, or a development agreement, or whatever, is basically the same type of thing. And then they go into how different jurisdictions have done it, and they looked at whether the more successful ones, it seemed, are the ones that had public hearings and very clearly defined what the benefit was and what you got for the benefit, or vice versa, rather than the case-by-case, which is the way this would work, as did, as does our current one. And they gave one example of Palo Alto, and they said it really did not work very well, because there were no specific guidelines, and it just made the process longer.
Thank you, Ms. Cantona. We have a question from Commissioner Hudes.
So, I have kind of a bigger, bigger-picture question, having been part of the process and, and having firsthand experienced your very involved input to the process as other members. The, the work of, of the committee went through many, many iterations, where we actually looked at an issue once and then came back to it. In the end, I support the recommendations of the PDSC. And to me, that's a starting point. My question for you is, do you support the recommendations of the PDSC? With maybe the exception of legislative changes that would compel us to do something otherwise?
I would support it if there was more specifics as to what constituted public benefit and what was being, I think somebody used the word "horse-trading," which is essentially what you're doing, what was being horse-traded for it. And this leaves that totally open. You can get one project that maybe gives a tiny little benefit and gets a huge deviation from a standard, or vice versa. So, that, that's one part that I don't agree with. And the other part that I really am disappointed in not having been, come to a conclusion from the committee, although I thought there was pretty much a consensus, that the ANS should take place at the same time as the plan development zoning. Because in essence, if you have a plan development zoning and you're doing a subdivision, and you can't approve the subdivision until you approve the zoning, but once you approve the zoning, you have to approve the subdivision, because it's already been approved, and the same thing with the ANS, you really don't have any discretion anymore.
Thank you. We have a follow-up from Commissioner Hudes.
If, since I don't think it's, it's our job or purview to recreate the PDSC and go through every point and take every possible input to it, but to you, but instead, to use the PDSC as a starting point, would you be willing to provide, in writing, so that we can consider this in a future meeting, any areas that you think are either not reflecting the decision of the PDSC, or are something that has evolved since then, rather than providing alternative points of view on, on every possible issue that there could be?
I can't promise. I am limiting the amount of time I spend on town items below what I have been, and I will try, but I can't promise. But I, I do think that, given that the general plan is going to be looked at, and given these new laws that we don't know how are going to affect us, and given lots of other things, the need for objective criteria, I don't...
As to my question, if you could provide those things in writing, that would be helpful to us. Thank you.
If I can provide it in writing, not coherently, but just stream of consciousness, where I get hung up is, I have all of these ideas, and I want to get it into a perfectly logical sequence, which is hard to do.
I can read William Faulkner, I can read you. Thank you, Ms. Cantona.
Oh, and one other thing I want to say, is that the final, the final consensus vote, we took consensus votes along the way, and they weren't always unanimous. Some of them were, some of them weren't. The final consensus vote that was made, was made so fast that it was already declared, approved consensus, before I was able to say, "Wait a minute." So, it was a consensus vote, but I don't think it was truly a unanimous vote.
Thank you very much for all of your input. Thank you.
And I hope you continue it.
I'm going to close the public portion of the public hearing, and turn, does the applicant want their last five minutes? And I'll turn to the commission. I have an idea, if I can quickly find it. Regarding how we proceed from here, I'm going to read staff's recommendation on page 10 of the staff report, as that may provide a guideline. Staff recommends the Planning Commission review, one, the proposed draft PD ordinance, two, the proposed changes to the table of conditional usage, and the proposed edits, three, of the general plan, and to discuss the eight questions highlighted in this report. Following our discussion, staff recommends that this item be continued to a date certain with specific direction from us, so they can bring back additional information and revisions to the four items we're going to discuss. Does that work for everybody? Commissioner Hudes.
I actually am concerned about that, because there have been some issues raised here that I would like to consider and think about before entering into a discussion of all of these eight items, including the, particularly the one that concerns me are the legislative impacts that may direct us to some of these things. I'd like to see an analysis of that before entering into these, since it's been alluded that there are some that impact what we have. Also, I would like to consider some of the comments from Ms. Cantona, both in the document that she submitted, that I have to admit that I did not have the opportunity to review in as much depth as I would like to, although I did read it as were required to. But I would like to take more time to that. And also, if there's additional input, particularly on the issues that I raised about legislative changes that impact this, and, you know, other issues that are just not representing the, the consensus of the PDSC, I'd like to have that in front of me before actually going into that discussion.
So, what is your proposal?
My proposal would be to, to take the second part of the staff recommendation first, which is to postpone with additional information and analysis from staff.
I don't disagree, but what I'd like to do, your point has merit, but what I'd like to do is go down the row of commissioners and see if, if they have questions. It reminds me of the question, "How do you eat an elephant?" "One bite at a time." And we've got an elephant on our hands here. Speaking of which, this, this has been going on since... Speaking of which, this has been going on since 2013, as has been pointed out, and it's very important work, and it was a huge undertaking. And I just want to put on the record who these people were, because I think they did a fantastic job. Mariko Sayoc, council member, Marcia Jensen, council member, Joanne Talasfori, planning commissioner, Charles Erickson, planning commissioner, our own Melanie Hansen, planning commissioner, Bob Hudes, who at that time was a general plan committee member, Todd Jarvis, Bob Byer, Lee Cantona, Jacque Van Nada, Jim Foley, and Jeffrey Barnett. Thank you to them all. So, additional comments. Commissioner Badami.
I'm in agreement with Vice Chair Hudes on his suggestion. And what I would like in front of me, or that I would like to absorb ahead of time, is getting additional comparative studies from neighboring jurisdictions on a number of items. And that would be mixed-use definitions for jurisdictions other than the ones provided, and specifically, maybe some cities that are more like us, like Saratoga and Los Altos. Also, too, I would like to see planned development ordinances from other neighboring jurisdictions. And again, Saratoga, Los Altos, Palo Alto, Campbell. And also, too, I would also like to get comparative studies on definitions for minimum, maximum density for residential units in commercial zones. And again, from neighboring jurisdictions, that might be Saratoga, Los Altos, Palo Alto, and Campbell.
Thank you. Other comments? Commissioner Birch.
Might be a bit of a question to staff, too. Since we are talking about how legislation is changing, how we're approaching housing, the comment, as you clarified, informing with the multi-use, like if it's in a construction, getting tired, commercial zone, being, maintaining that, as we are looking at these changes, is that something that we would now maybe want to shy away from? I'm thinking of a couple particular properties that may, although they are zoned commercial, may actually be more suitable to residential. And so maybe, is there a different way we could look at that? To bring in more of the housing stock and not make that just a set? If it's in the commercial, it has to be the mixed-use. Is there a way we could look at that differently? Reword that?
Well, there's a way. The way would be leave it as it is and not require the mixed-use, which isn't currently required.
Okay, I like that.
So I think any of those things can be part of a motion. I would just also offer, you know, it was a lengthy process, which has been referenced over and over. Laws are going to change every year. I would hope that we can get some progress, if not on all of this, shortly, not this evening. Sounds like we have consideration of additional information, which is perfectly fine. But I also don't want to have this end up being, you know, we're going through a general plan update, let's wait till that's done. And so we'd be back here in about two or three more years, and we'd sit on this information. So hopefully, we can come up with a good game plan to move forward. Our conversation with council at the last hearing regarding the general plan update work plan included interest in kind of separating out and having parallel tracks for the larger general plan update, but also looking at the potential for getting more objective standards in the general plan even earlier, so actually doing general plan amendments concurrently with those, which would probably go quicker and could be adopted, and then ultimately incorporated in the final document. This subjective standards conversation is going to continue to evolve. And I think we need to see what additional information the commission is interested in getting. We can provide that information and continue that conversation.
I agree the item requires more study. But what I'm driving at is, can we get anything specifically done tonight? Any questions, any likes, dislikes, clarifications? Commissioner Hudes has given us some, but give staff a general sense of how we individually feel about the four items in front of us. Commissioner Hansen.
I just wanted to weigh in, since I also sat on the Plan Development Study Committee. I do believe that the current document in front of us is vastly superior to the existing PD ordinance. And I don't know if the other commissioners noticed, but there was the interim version also done by the policy committee, and which was more limited than what the Plan Development Study Committee and two of the council members sat on the Plan Development Study Committee. And so after all that time, you know, I think that the document we have in front of us is vastly superior to the existing PD ordinance, and that we ought to consider going with that. But I do share the concern with, especially with the new laws encouraging housing production. It impacts things like, you know, the minimum lot size and other aspects of the, you know, what's required for PDs, and so on and so forth. So I would like to hear more about what those housing laws are relative to what's in front of us to go forward with it. But I do don't want to see this thing get protracted into the whole general plan cycle. The one thing I would pull, you know, to say that could go in the general plan cycle is the specifics about public benefits. If you look at the document that Ms. Cantona gave us, every one of those jurisdictions did a fairly lengthy study to get to the point where they had a very defined list approved by the public of what constitutes a public benefit, and then how to incent developers to do that, like what kind of, what incentives work, and then they even had where you could quantify the incentives. This is not something that can be done very quickly. So that being the case, we could at least put a placeholder definition, such as the one by Jack Vanneta, into the Plan Development Study language that we have, which would at least give some, a general scope to what defines a public benefit, and then take it on as a task in the general plan process, or maybe what the objective standards are. I don't know. But to do that, but I don't see the, getting a really good list of public benefits that the town really feels good about as something we can do in the short term. But I do think that, I agree with Commissioner Badami on some of these, defining minimum open space requirements, you know, defining a minimum lot size, is there a minimum lot size for planned developments? Minimum, maximum density? I think all of these are things we need to, A, understand the law about, and B, it would be worth checking with additional jurisdictions, just like you did in the definition of the mixed-use project, to see what's happening. Because if we come out and say, you know, our minimum lot size for planned development is 40,000, and everyone else is doing 10,000, then we're not, we're either, you know, A, not being competitive, or we're perhaps even violating the intent of the California laws. Because if we try and make it too big, you know, maybe there's a good affordable housing development that could go on a 10,000-square plot. So I would like just to get some, it doesn't have to be an exhaustive thing, but specifically on a couple of these, I think Commissioner Badami gave a good list, get a little bit of data from some of the jurisdictions that are like us, and then also this analysis of the California housing laws, and if it changes the way we think about it, some of the language.
So I just offer, we're not going to provide an in-depth analysis of the 17 bills that were passed. What I will say is that the town manager, and I have been discussing this actually, and council members have been discussing this, and the intent is to try to find someone. There's been a number of workshops all over the state, as you can imagine. I was just at one in San Francisco yesterday. And so there are a number of speakers who are attorneys generally, and they have been going around providing presentations. We are hoping to bring somebody in for a joint planning commission and council study session. The details haven't been finalized. I can't give you a timeline, but just so you know that that is in the works. And as we get more information, I'll definitely be providing that to the commission.
Other questions, comments? Commissioner Birch.
I just have a quick question, if I'm taking some of this away and reviewing it. Why did the committee want to get rid of the minimum lot size in the first place, if we're revisiting this?
Well, I would just offer that I think, for me, whether it's flashbacks or Groundhog's Day, I think Commissioner Hansen kind of hit the point, is you may have a lot that's smaller than 40,000, which is our current requirement, that is totally appropriate for a small, affordable housing development, but needs some concessions and would otherwise have to go through the variance process. And so that's ultimately why it was eliminated, I believe, from the committee. And so, again, what staff did was, at the end of all of those hundreds of motions and conversations about the individual topics, there were these eight pieces that came out where, in that case specifically, they made a recommendation, which is included, but they also wanted to make sure that that was an item that the planning commission and council considered.
Okay, thanks.
Other question or comments? Commissioner Badami.
Again, another nitpicky issue. But I'm just looking at Exhibit 5, and it's Section 29.80.080. And this is kind of a wordsmith issue. It says, "A relaxation of standards applicable to similar types of development." It seems to me that the word "deviation" would be a better fit, rather than "relaxation." Just a comment.
Where are you exactly? Exhibit 5?
She's on page one of Exhibit 5.
And?
29.80.080, A3.
Section A, and then number three. It talks about a relaxation of standards. I think a deviation would be a more appropriate word choice.
Comment, Mr. Paulson?
I don't have a comment. I think we will, we can have those wordsmithing conversations, which we had many of those at the Plan Development Study Committee as well, as we move forward. But, so we'll definitely, we can take a look at that. I think, once we get closer to formulating a recommendation, again, we're going to have verbatim minutes of all the meetings the planning commission holds as we forward a recommendation to council. And then possibly Commissioner Hudes or Commissioner Hansen might have additional comments on any of these changes that might be suggested.
Commissioner Hudes?
So I wanted to just say a couple things about it, is that, you know, it not only reflected the work of all those folks, you know, that Commissioner Kane listed, but it also reflected quite a bit of community input. And I think we really need to take that seriously. And for that reason, I, and a lot of that community input actually started with the Albright Way development and the need to address some of these issues. So I am very much in favor of substantially supporting the recommendations of the PDSC. I think it's a very significant improvement over what we currently have in our general plan and in our various other zoning ordinances. And I think it's also a very positive evolution from where the policy committee started, in a way that I think is very beneficial to the town. And while there are points that I was not in favor of during the total discussion, I am very much in favor of the whole. And so I would, I'd like to just weigh in on that, that I am not in favor of reopening every point that was ever considered, because I think a lot of it does reflect the will of the community through a democratic process. And then the other thing I just wanted to say is that I think the, while some things may overlap with the general plan, I am concerned about the timeline, and I would like to see this come through more quickly than the general plan is likely to come through. And so with the exception of areas that are really better addressed in the general plan, I'd like to see most of the items in the PDSC recommendations go forward. I think the example that Commissioner Hansen used about public benefit is a good one to defer final resolution to the general plan, because public benefit applies to many things beyond planned developments that are referenced, and it would be good to get, you know, that process resolved. But I do think the bulk of what is in the PDSC recommendations and in the language that's been proposed does reflect the will of the community, and so I'd like to support that. I would also prepare to make a motion at some point.
When you say you support the work, the findings of the PDSC, does that mean you feel they have ruled or had input on all four items that are before us today?
I think the last item of additional considerations were ones they didn't deliberate on, but I think the others, yes.
So you'd support the first three, and then we still need to do the eight questions?
Yeah, for the most part, although some of those eight questions were also addressed, so.
Okay, good. I'm okay with that. Other comments? Commissioner Janoff?
Yeah, to that point, it sounds like it would be beneficial, if I'm not reading into your words, Mr. Paulson, that it would be beneficial to have this policy in place. Presently, there may be modifications that would come in the future as a result of work on the general plan that would, excuse me, then cross-reference and make some changes. But if that's true from your perspective, and we've already gone through the process, the very deep and diligent process of the PDSC, I guess I'm finding it difficult to understand why we wouldn't approve what we have before us tonight to put working documents in place, and then take the items, the eight items that were outside of the purview of the PDSC to the future discussion. So that, my question is...
I think the intent was that we had a chance to review them. Commissioner Hudes, you wanted to make a motion?
Maybe I'll respond and say that, while I think the bulk of the items, I would be perfectly happy to support just as they are. It had, a couple of things have been raised. One is that there are potential legal or legislative changes that might impact some of these things, and I'd like to hear specifically from staff on that. I also think that Commissioner Badami raised a number of points for clarification in terms of definition. That would be very helpful to consider as well. So for that reason, I'm ready to make a motion.
Let's hear from Commissioner Donald first.
I don't want to say anything, I'm not saying anything different, except to say we see the changes coming out of the legislature by simply reading the newspaper, and all kinds of scary things are coming down the tracks. So to the extent that we, and I think the staff's already said this, to the extent that we can take care of things sooner rather than later, definitely not waiting for the general plan, the better off it is, because somebody is going to zip in here and have a project nobody wants, and they're going to point out to us why we have to take it. And unless we are, and I'm not saying we're not doing anything wrong by saying we want to have objective standards, that's the best we can do. And to the extent that this would help us have objective standards, then I, for one, would like to see us do it soon. I don't think tonight is the right time to do it, but soon.
I agree with you completely, Commissioner. We can comply with the law as they evolve, but we should move forward on this. Commissioner Janoff, we were going to get a motion from Commissioner Hudes. What would you like to do?
Just a point of clarification. Staff has said that they won't be presenting us with detailed legislative analysis.
That's right.
And that the definition for public benefit, I guess the conversation among commissioners was that is a lengthier conversation that would be more suitable to the track of the general plan. So that being said, I'm not sure, those are the points that we have questions about. What else do we want to continue this for, if we're not going to get that information in a timely manner?
And I would just offer, I think there's a couple ways to deal with some of this stuff. The public benefit, you know, for instance, Jack Vanneta submitted an option. I think we pulled some other options. We used to have an option, we just called it community benefit. So we have a lot of good starting point language. If there are things like Ms. Cantona mentioned, or you guys have mentioned, where the public benefit maybe should have some objective standards in it, we don't necessarily need to create all those at this point. That can be part of a recommendation, and as this evolves, we can get that direction from council. Matter of the forum I was at yesterday, I mean, it was how objective is objective, or something along those lines. And it's, everyone is dealing with this issue. There'll be a lot of work coming out of other jurisdictions that we may be able to utilize, but everyone's still kind of in the same boat with that. But I think some of that stuff can be rolled into a recommendation, once we get there. I think, you know, we optimistically assume two meetings. Again, that's probably optimistic. The reality is, probably all along, was going to take three meetings potentially to get through this, depending on how the next meeting goes. And so that's fine from that perspective, but I think we do want to try to be somewhat timely, and then we can always course correct in the future. We're already hearing the bills that were adopted last year were just a start. So this session, we're expecting quite a bit more work to be done from our legislators, and so we'll wait and see what comes of that.
Commissioner Hansen?
So I hear your issue with the legislation. A, it's a moving target, and B, there's a lot of it, and everyone's still trying to process it. a lot of it, and everyone's still trying to process it. As, in thinking through this thing, I mean, it's probably, having worked also on the housing element, it seems more likely that all these legislative changes are really going to be more targeted at all the housing code and standards versus specifically the plan developments, which are sort of a special case. So I, maybe I'm not, I don't know if my thinking is accurate on that, but I think we're probably have more of an issue about the legal aspects of this with our other land use standards than just the plan development ordinance. Would that be fair?
That is, that is an accurate statement. I think there are some opportunities potentially in the PD zone, but typically, when someone's coming in for a PD zone, they're asking for deviations, relaxations from the standards. Ultimately, we are going to need to enhance or modify our existing objective standards in our general plan and in our zoning code, and that's really what's going to drive it. But I think Ms. Cantona brought up a good point about the public benefit, in that, you know, if you want this, here is an example of what the town considers public benefit. So those can be more objective than leaving it open to the decision makers, which is one of the challenges I think some folks had with the community benefit, which is why we no longer have that, along with the Nexus challenges.
Right. Well, so I'll hear Commissioner Hudes's motion, but I did want to bring that up, that I, you know, in, you know, kind of hearing the conversation, I wouldn't want the, an exhaustive review of the law with all the new housing law to make this delayed by months and months and months and months, you know, and so that being the case, you know, I, for me personally, I'd be happy if we could just get, you know, do a sanity check on some of these definitions, you know, like the minimum lot size and the minimum open space requirements, and the, relative to what other jurisdictions are doing, so that we're not, like, way out of line.
Yeah, and we'll pull some more comparative information, and we'll probably have to put some of it in the table. I think frankly, why we don't have some of that information for certain jurisdictions is, many of them don't have it, so we'll just put that in the table, so you know we at least looked at those jurisdictions, and if they don't have it, we will delineate that in some way.
Thank you. Commissioner Hudes?
So I think my motion's going to be a bit of a dud, but it's going to be pretty, after all this, it's pretty simple. I would move to continue the item to a date certain, and the date would come from staff with specific direction that includes the comments made by commissioners tonight, and to consider those carefully in recommending a date and in providing us with information for the next meeting.
And staff would suggest March 28th.
So the motion would be to March 28th.
Is there a second? Commissioner Badami?
So seconded.
Any discussion? I'll call the vote. All in favor? Aye, opposed, passes unanimously, six, zero. Commissioners, do we, are there appeal rights? Seven, zero. Oh, she's back. Seven, zero. Sorry. You're out so much, I didn't know.
Hopefully, no more.
Are there any commission matters that we want to bring up, items, Commissioner and Commissioner for staff? In that case, are there, is there a report from the Director of Community Development?
There is briefly. Council met last week, and they adopted, they did the second reading for the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, so we now have regulations that make it less cumbersome to obtain a permit for an ADU. They also, as mentioned before, considered the general plan update, gave us some direction. We'll be going back to them, hopefully, actually, next week with a general work plan, so that we get their buy-off on that, so that an RFP can be sent out, and a consultant can be selected for our general plan update. And unfortunately, with many, those items and many other items, they were unable to get to the continued discussion of the North Forty, and that's been continued further till March 6th, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, and thank you all. This meeting is adjourned.